We're gonna, we're gonna wait for Jamie. She's gonna be here. She at seven fifty-three. She told me she just start without me if you have to, just come by thirty-one. In other words, she must just went past thirty.
Oh, gotcha. You said I'm sorry, I didn't get you nothing.
Nope. It's getting that way, isn't it?
It's that way already. You only get it between the trucks.
I had the same thing, but I went down the gravel from, I went straight across to thirty-one and come up. Thirty-one was alright with all the gravel roads back there. They were just constant. It was thirty-five mile an hour road all the way.
Good morning, Don.
Trucks picked over.
We're gonna wait for Jamie. She's on her way. It'll probably be about five minutes after eight. Pardon? Well, just letting you know, eight o'clock comes, I don't call to order. We're just gonna wait a few minutes for her. Of course, what she said, just going past thirty-one, I wonder what she meant. If it was, I'm thinking two hundred, maybe she got under thirty-one ways south of town. I doubt it.
Depends on Mercy County. Let's pick her up.
I have been driving down the airport road, but I see they've got that. Looks like completed. They kept the construction signs over unless the wind did that.
Yeah, when I seen they had the striking done on it and stuff.
Once the striking's done, that's.
Drive down it, check it out. So is Interstate, send that bill then to the state where we were gonna get the grant for that? Is Charlie doing that?
I'm assuming it'll probably be a request for payment and then.
Cause I don't see any of it.
You don't see any of it? Okay.
And like Charlie said, then we'll get a check. We'll get the bills, then we get the check from the state, then we pay.
Right, and this one, because of the flex funding, this one's a little different.
Yes, it is. I don't, yeah, I'll have to find out. It's either state or credit.
This one's state, and then it was because of the grant that we got that they, they were able to forward the invoice. They'll get the check and then we can pay the contractor.
Yeah, it's gonna be like a, basically a hundred percent paid for.
So.
From now, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Which, it's a good deal. There was a, I got email on that too. They said there was a, something in the state too, that the engineering costs can be part of that too now.
Yeah, from April four.
Right.
Right.
Well, never mind.
We haven't started yet.
We haven't, I said we're gonna wait till Jamie gets here unless it's gonna be late. Okay. We'll call this Mercy County Commission meeting to order, start with the Pledge of Legions. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Hearing no for the discussion. Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Twenty twenty-five budget updates, review and discussion.
Okay, so what I did is I added the sheriff's expense. I put it in his budget, so like Jamie's right, we're good with that. They're not gonna be going over for next year because of this way we're doing it. So seventy-four thousand one seventy to the sheriff's budget specifically, and then for that retirement, we added the thirteen-five, thirteen thousand five hundred to retirement, five thousand seven hundred to social security. Total was ninety-three thousand three seventy. So in the general fund, we have to lower that expense by ninety-three thousand three seventy, but I have one suggestion, and then I'll, you know, let you do your thing. The only suggestion is, we have ninety-five thousand in the general fund for landfill. It's on the transfer sheet. And all I'm saying, if you handle that like we do with the extension service, we leave it on the transfer sheet, it would come out of that appropriations line. We just take it out of the general fund, then our expenses will be down.
That's ninety-five thousand, you say?
Yes, and I actually, if you're interested at all, I did make copies of what the general fund looked like. Yep. I made copies for everybody to look at. So that's my suggestion. Now, on county road part of it, I raised the crushing in gravel to a million. I took out all the bump ups, put back the regular wage of the dollar fifty that they were gonna get before. And then I was told, well, you can't go over the fourteen point eight one mil, so in that appropriations, it came to two thousand forty-four thou- uh, two hundred forty-four thousand. So that's where we're sitting with county road right now. Mill is fourteen point eight.
The two forty-four, then we added to the cash reserve.
Yep, that two forty-four is in the cash reserve.
On the county road, how, what's the rest of the commission feel on that one? I'm okay with the county road budget the way it sits right now. I agree, there could be some other changes, but I think, why I'm bringing that up is because I think the general fund one might be a little more. I'll have to rely on my, rest of my commissioners on that enterprise fund, on the suggestion about the landfill.
Well, it's not gonna change their expenses. It's not gonna change their revenues other than an allocation from the general fund, which can still be done in twenty-five if needed. I mean, that'd be a real easy edit.
Okay.
You know, from a budget standpoint, on the landfill. On the county road stuff, I mean, if we're planning on making wage changes, I'd like to see it in the expenses, but it's not a make or break deal on, on the budget. Just because.
I would agree.
The way I look at it.
See it.
Yeah, the way I look at it, if you're planning on those expenses, it's best to have them in and then reduce your cash on there because you know you're gonna make that expense anyway, but.
But I wasn't agreeable with the amounts that they.
Correct.
Correct.
That was absurd.
So if it was in the budget, that doesn't mean it's automatic, you know, but at least it's in the budget, so.
What about like if you would, we're gonna take, we budgeted the one thirty on that, and not know it now, if we budgeted the one thirty, and we're only going to use a small portion of, probably less than, you know, thirty thousand of it in twenty twenty-four, we're gonna have a hundred thousand dollar carryover, and that'll affect that portion of the budget also then.
Is that in here?
No, I'm just hypothetically, we do have that budget.
But I mean, it's in the carryover.
You know, could we put the one thirty in there, in twenty-four?
We did.
We didn't, we're not gonna use it all.
Once Alice got hired, that was lower. We had used it for bump ups. Where, is Alice here?
Yep.
So do you know where does that sit in that, how much got spent on it there?
I was reviewing the numbers of how much spent on it.
Oh, yeah, you did. I gave it to everybody, and I'll have to find out. But that was supposed to be kept track of.
So you're saying part of that come out of that one thirty?
Oh, yeah, before, and I know that was before because I was keeping track of it.
Okay.
Oh, just a good point, because I mean, I wasn't aware that we took it out of that one thirty.
I don't think we used any of it yet.
Yeah, we did. Then who got? We used it on other bump ups, that were done right away. I gotta go find it. I, yeah. That I have to look up.
Cause I honestly, I know I.
Cause we went and froze wages after.
After Alice was hired, but not before that.
But Alice wasn't a bump up, so unless there's some bump ups that we're unaware of.
No, no, you were aware of it. It was before Alice though. It was before March.
You know, but.
And I know it wasn't the total.
But the discussion.
But I gotta find my.
The discussion centers on using that, that actual one thirty, I don't remember it ever coming to the board where we used that one thirty.
Right. Yeah, I.
Any of the one thirty, correct?
Pardon?
Any portion of the one thirty, right?
I don't remember ever taking a look, yeah.
Jean, Alice has something.
So as we're talking about bump ups, and I know this should have been brought up earlier, but we do have a deputy in one of these departments that's making less than what our current deputies are, our new hired deputies for those departments, different departments. I really feel she needs to be brought up to.
You're talking the courthouse deputies?
Yes.
Okay, when you say deputy, I think sure it's department, and I'm like, what? We just did that.
Candy's department, the landfill too, is less. So I did go through the spreadsheet this weekend, and I included the deputy for landfill, and also Jim Quaid. If we would bump him up a dollar.
Yeah.
But this deputy in the courthouse has been here over five years, and she's making less than what new deputies earn. So I just thought I would work on this spreadsheet to show you what it would cost if we decided to do those type of bump ups.
And just outlawed, outlawed thoughts, which gets a person in trouble real fast, is we're up against our appropriation, which this would affect the new hire here. Oh, this is, this one's landfill. So that would be in that enterprise fund. This one here would be the general fund.
Well, Candy probably does have room within her budget from this year and next year because she's also worked short all year. With the exception of, what, a month?
Month.
That we had an individual hire.
Another page here?
Here.
Not disagreeing, but we're having to look at some cuts to begin with.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not saying it has to be after the final, I'm just saying that.
Just bringing it to our attention.
Yep.
Well, that's just, you know, that's part of what, I'm in agreement with Jean, and the fact that we're literally three days away from deadline. You know, and if we can put all this stuff on, put the elbow grease to it in, into, in a week and a half from now, you know, the next meeting, versus right now.
We, we cannot exceed the, in the general fund, well, in any of the funds, we cannot exceed the final appropriation that was set at the preliminary, and we cannot exceed the mills. So increasing any expense that would, we, we actually gotta look at reducing the final appropriation amount by ninety-three thousand. Yeah, it's a numbers game here. We can up the cash reserve because that doesn't increase the final appropriation, which increases our mills. And our mills then can't go over fifty, I'm just gonna say fifty-eight. I don't know what the point was, but let's just say fifty-eight. So you can, we could play the political game if we wanted to, and that'll make for a great voter turnout, is we can increase our cash reserve and then do a budget amendment later.
Well, they're already matted us anyways, Jean, so why not?
I'm just saying it's, yeah. But we have to cut ninety-three thousand, so one recommendation by the auditor was the, the landfill amount of ninety-five thousand, which I had never even looked at, never thought of, so I don't.
It would just be easy because we just, we did like the extension. Where's the, where's the fifty thousand for?
Okay, no, that's within the miscellaneous account.
Miscellaneous.
Oh, that's why I couldn't find it.
Oh, that was a transfer?
That miscellaneous line, you mean?
No, yeah, yeah, it's in there.
Well, this is revenue, revenue, revenue.
Lower that miscellaneous line.
So that has to be under our expenditures here someplace, you say? Landfill, right here. What was that transfer of ninety-five thousand out?
Well, what we're doing right now would happen.
What was it for?
Five thousand, they were gonna give landfill help, the general fund was covering the help. Forty-five thousand for the help, plus fifty thousand for extra monies. We were, not extra monies, we were covering their wages and insurance. It was the extra monies.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
For the health and then, oh, okay, wages.
Yeah.
And, and you, yeah. Did that thirty, did you take that thirty out of the recorder budget?
No, that isn't even in the general fund. Like, the recorder's budget, we took it out of her budget and then put it into the recorder's documentation.
Not that of preservation.
Right, and that's in a whole nother.
That's not in the general fund?
Two one one zero.
Twenty one ten.
So that.
That wouldn't affect the county recorder's final appropriation?
No, we already took it out of, that, what you're seeing for her expenses minus thirty thousand.
Okay.
Is there any way to find out if we bumped up these back two pages here? Cause I know the landfill is separate from stuff.
Well, here's the thing.
What?
I'm gonna have to go back and look at that, because I didn't know that's what you wanted. I mean, if you guys wanna go ahead and just set it at one thirty, then use it, because, you know, it's gonna all come out of here.
No, we did one thirty for this current year.
Yeah.
That we haven't used.
Okay, and, and if that's what Alice is saying, then I guess we did.
Well.
Alice didn't say.
Regardless of what Alice.
None of us.
The HR, she would know, so I'm giving Alice, you know, that's part of her job, so disregard what I said. You got a hundred and thirty thousand.
I know there was bump ups last year before I was HR, but I think that came out of her budgets.
Okay, but that would affect.
But that would affect. But I've been having.
But they, she was not HR at the current time, so it's not pointing fingers. And nobody's pointing fingers.
No, okay, just always, the only question that was originally raised by Jamie is, where is the hundred and thirty thousand?
Okay, I have a question, and I don't miss expenses or, so if there were bump ups before the end of the year because people had it in their budgets and could do that, that affects what our wages, if that affects what happens to this year's wages, was part of that hundred and thirty thousand used to cover what was not budgeted for? Because we had to cover those new wages because the bump ups were done after the budget was done. I'm just, I'm just asking.
And I agree with what you're saying.
I agree, and I think some of it, like, if there was any in the sheriff, but then it went back to still working so short, so I don't think he is gonna go, like, went over his.
No, 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 but I, I'm just, it's just a question.
And I agree with the question and, you know, in, in overall view of it. The thing about it is like, my question then is like, how did we get to the, and if we did do that, that's fine, but we never ever discussed it here, you know? Where, where does that money come from? I mean, that, those, those are the things that I always wonder is, we end up doing things and not knowing that, that they happened, you know, you know, like, you know, if the bill got paid that way, I was never aware that we paid it out of the one thirty, and I think that's what the rest of the commission is saying too. It may or may not happen that way, like what you're saying, and it might have been the way to handle it, but we didn't discuss it up here.
Anybody getting bump ups? And I'm thinking Dawn's right, that it did happen before and then we used it.
And it just, so it did.
Nothing would happen without them coming before you guys.
And let's, so it did. What was the amount approximately that would have come out of the hundred and thirty? I mean, we can't be talking fifty thousand, can we?
I, I would have to go back and look. And I'd have to go research it and find out. But I'm thinking what Dawn said, that's probably what happened, and then after the meeting, we just never talked about it.
So the hundred and thirty was just basically part of the general fund?
Yes.
And so tracking, it would be. Track, tracking other wage increases throughout the year, we could total those and say that came out of the hundred and thirty. Maybe.
That's the only way it can be tracked.
Yeah.
Is when you get bump ups, we record it in the minutes, we know when those bump ups come up, and then we look back and take that away.
Just for, for all numbers figuring roughly, just like what we discussed here was, you know, overall, I'm sure we probably did less than what we did the sheriff to put, you know, here last week on Friday, and we did seventy-four thousand, and we only, we only did like nineteen thousand for social security and all the other, you know, the portion of it, so it's like roughly nineteen thousand. So I would say we're well within that twenty thousand dollar range, in overall.
So in, in our revenue, where is, I'm trying to find this real quick, the carryover.
Oh, the cash carryover?
Yeah, because that's where that hundred and thirty would be, whatever the balance of that hundred and thirty would be.
Page one, eight.
Okay.
Do we look at the January, the balance here? Is your cash carryover purchased?
This number right here. So this hundred and thirty, or whatever the amount is, would be in this two million.
That's basically everything that's.
That's what we're.
That's what I'm getting at, it doesn't.
It's not, it's not broken out.
Right.
Right.
So it's kind of a moot point, it's, it's in there.
So. I'm trying to put this together so it really wouldn't matter how much would, that hundred and thirty would be left because it's just in the cash carryover. Okay. Didn't answer your question completely, Jamie, but that's the only way, the best I can do.
I thought we were just talking that, like, say Terry did some bump ups, the only ones I recall were for nine one one, and that came out of nine one one budget, so it really doesn't affect, I mean, I think anything that was done was done within people's budget parameters, so.
So, right, but for the ma, for, for right now, even if we would, were to use any of that portion of the one thirty today to give bump ups, it would still increase what our expenses for next year, so it wouldn't, it really wouldn't do us, it would have had it been done before the preliminary budget came out, is the only way I can answer.
Could we, we lower the cash carryover and just.
Correct.
Yeah, raise the.
Yeah.
Simple as that.
Back to, we need to come up with ninety-three thousand.
What all is in this miscellaneous line?
Fair board is one, Medicaid was one.
Yeah.
There was like four, I remember.
Okay, I'll go get my sheet. Travis, do you respond by?
And not saying I'm in favor of or against ninety-five thousand landfill, but how does that affect the landfill? Budget.
Miscellaneous. Ninety-five thousand.
Yes.
Under our expenses.
Would you like my file? I found other papers I've been looking for within the pile.
Okay.
That's a hundred and four, hundred and sixty, right?
But you know, honestly, with Jean's, with this.
And what's all in the miscellaneous?
Okay.
A bunch of little ones, but a couple bigger ones.
Let's see, you should call it dues, dues for toll division, economic development. This is where the fair board one is, dues and subscriptions to NBCO, haze and fire truck. Armor support. Artsy, historical society, vision west economics, and then the fair board.
Still the easiest one in the landfill allocation, so you can transfer the same stuff.
It's just taken out of. Exactly.
Makes life a lot simpler. If you go in here, you're gonna have to cut something, or you're gonna take a little piece of every little pie and it's.
But I still can't, well, you know.
Like I said, you, you could, even if you decrease the miscellaneous by a hundred thousand, then we raise the cash reserve a hundred thousand, and then we
can do that.
Cover that out of the reserve, which is. Kind of a deceiving way to do it.
I found the fifty is down. I guess it's the same, it's just.
But I wanna know how, what effect that ninety-five thousand on the transfer to the landfill, how that's gonna affect the landfill budget?
It won't.
None at all?
No, actually, when I talk to Linda, that's the only way we can give the landfill any money, it's gotta be through a transfer because they're on enterprise.
That's essentially how McKenzie County does it for their landfill. That's how McKenzie County does it.
They don't matter enterprise. But they, I checked.
Yeah.
But yeah, but technically do. But she's worked with both of them.
But Jean's comment to try to make it clean and concise is, you know, don't take it from a bunch of little spots, take it from one.
Right, just take it from one.
Rather than doing, you want to have one clean.
And then we could just remember that again, is what I'm thinking.
Because you go in there and you're gonna have a bunch of little pieces in there from the miscellaneous.
Right.
Marv, you're too quiet over. What are you thinking?
I agree with what you said, uh, did, uh, we sure, it's a little bit. What do you think?
Yeah.
I'm just waiting.
How do you want, this guy, what I motion in the discussion? Do you wanna?
I think we're at the stage where we should be done motions, just so that we finalize.
Make a motion.
How much we take it out, reduce the landfill, uh, by the landfill allocation by ninety-five thousand, we can use it for a transfer. If there's a second, you can discuss it.
I'm writing this real fast, so I got it on my agenda. Okay, now it's by Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion.
Again, I think it's the easiest and cleanest way to do it, so, and if somebody else has a different opinion, I'd like to hear it, I know, I guess.
I like the, the clean part of it, and as we go into twenty-five, we can see how the landfill is doing, and if they need ninety-five thousand, we'll do a budget amendment. If they don't, we'll do less, um, I mean, we're not taking anything away from the landfill's budget, it's just how to stabilize it so that they can accommodate what they need to do.
I, I can't disagree with that. I, I agree. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion passed. That, is there any other? On the general, any other discussion, or any, any other discussion on the general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Two seconds.
What do we, how much do we have to make up, like ninety-three seventy is what I wrote down, is that right?
Ninety-three thousand two hundred and seven.
Three hundred and seventy?
And we just pulled ninety-five out of the general fund expense.
Right, but Jamie and I are looking at.
Doing math.
Yep.
Okay. I'll wait. I don't know what you're thinking, but I'll wait.
Not opposed, but paused.
Well, sometimes I know better than to ask, what are you thinking?
Depends if you want a truthful answer.
Truthful, or do I wanna know?
I'll make a motion, I want to decrease MCDAD's allocation down to forty thousand and accept the bump ups for the recorder, deputy recorder and maintenance supervisor.
And I'll second that.
Hold on, you wanna decrease MCDAD by how much?
Down, just ten.
Down.
Yeah, so it'd be at forty, actually.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I gotta, what is it currently?
Fifty.
Uh, sorry, I shouldn't ask. Um, we're in the middle of a motion. You made a motion, correct?
Yeah, and Liza seconded it.
And, oh, Liza seconded already, okay, then I can ask.
Then you can ask.
Now you can, yeah.
Gotta keep myself in order. Okay, reduce MCDAD fro- I, I know what the motion was, but what was the original amount for MCDAD?
Fifty.
And you're gonna, your, your motion was to reduce it to?
Forty.
Forty.
Okay, so she's saying.
And then there was a second portion.
Alex. We wanna just make sure we got the numbers right, they're pulling maintenance supervisor slash risk management. Right, so that's what I, make sure, so I do the two together should be seven three twenty-two. Right, and this one, and this.
Is that all part of that motion?
Yes. And so, it took, hey.
Holy cow.
And, but just so we.
All of the motion, um. I couldn't, I couldn't even follow their motion.
Right, so decrease ten grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, decrease ten grand, and then.
I can check my math. Okay, so these are the two that you requested. So three, two, two, four, eight, okay, oh, I'm like six, eight.
I just better sit carefully.
We should even, oh, it should be forty.
Forty.
And I took ninety-five thousand minus this ninety-three twenty-seven to get seventeen.
Might be entertaining here a little bit.
Total, so that this should be like.
We don't need to call a timeout like if you're gonna.
These are the nurses right behind me, so.
You're probably safer next to her. I got Jean on track, so.
Okay, so reduce MCDAD and, uh, do the Jim out. I hate using names. And, uh,
Just say deputy recorder.
The risk manager bump up and the deputy recorder bump up.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you Travis for helping me out on that also. Wow, that one went, I wasn't even prepared for that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, I didn't even write this down. Did Jamie make the motion?
Jamie made motion, decrease.
And Liza seconded, correct? All right. Well. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Okay, now unanimous. All right, you got a few changes so far. We're not done.
Hey, so, right, this is the one just to MCDAD, so now I need a motion to approve. I included.
That was in the bud, in the motion.
It was a dual motion.
Yep, that was all in the motion, to reduce the la- uh, MCDAD by ten thousand and include the
Accept deputy recorder and.
And record, deputy recorder bump ups as presented.
Yep.
Let's just put it that way. That was your motion, correct?
Yep.
I'll wait till you get that.
Got it.
Got it? Okay, are there any other general fund questions or concerns? Well, better not say concerns. Okay, road department, are we, where are we on that?
We've got a proposal on the sewage increase that we talked about on Friday, but it's a little different here. I don't know. We had out on two different levels. One was to start with, you can write them down if you got them, or read them off. Utility would go from twenty-four oh-six to twenty-six fifty. Office administrat- there would have been a raise of two forty-four. Office administration would go from twenty-six eighty-nine to twenty-eight, was a dollar and eleven cents. Class A truck driver, all, all of them would be, we would not have class Bs anymore, and we would not hire anymore class Bs, we'd just have class As. That's what we need, and that level would be at twenty-eight dollars to hire at that rate.
Rick, do we current, we currently have a B not?
Yes, but we, they all have class A license.
He does have an A license?
They all do. There's four of them. So then they vary, you know, on their wages, uh, I'll give you a quick rundown. One's twenty-four fifty, uh, one's twenty-five ninety-eight because he does mechanic work. Um, let's see, I'm trying to find their names on here.
They all have T.
Twenty-four fifty is another one, and another one's at twenty-five fifty because he did mechanic work also. In the wintertime, they spend a lot of, they do mechanic work in the shop. Those four, that, that would be, and then operator one would be, there was two of them, they were at twenty-seven oh-nine, they go to twenty-eight oh-nine.
What about the A truck drivers, what did you say those were going to?
Yeah, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Across all four of them. And then the last, uh, you have operator twos would be, um, they're at thirty-two and twenty-five, they go to thirty-three twenty-five, and you've got two higher operators at thirty-three forty-five, will go to thirty-three ninety-five, forty, oh, fifty cents. That's about one of the proposals.
So Rick, some of these class A drivers, like the one, has he even been here six months? Like, is he even out of probation to justify four dollar an hour raise?
Well, the biggest thing is, is that to hire on that, uh, twenty, I looked across the board, what did average east to west?
Yeah.
Wester higher. This was right in the middle to hire a class A truck driver. If we replace anybody, we'd hire, they'd have to be a class A driver. They'd have to have the requirements, and they would be at, they would be at that twenty-eight dollar level. The only other thing was, is if you wanted to do, it's a set an entry level, you know, I'm just throwing these numbers out, let's say instead of twenty-eight, set them at twenty-seven, and then two years later, you know, with twenty, twenty-seven fifty, and then that way you'd have a little bit of a step up. That we can work on too, but either just original proposal, not, not saying that's what we're gonna do, or just to put something out there.
What about, um, there's a, I think he's delayed currently, but twenty-seven oh-nine, what was the proposal on him?
The twenty-seven oh-nines would go to twenty-eight oh-nine.
Okay, then for just some more, um, other discussion, our final appropriation at the, um, proposed budget was six, seven, nine, nine. Right now, we're at six, two, fourteen, which leaves up five hundred and eighty-four thousand. We're five hundred and eighty-four thousand, less than what was, uh, originally appropriated, but, um, our mills, uh, we had our auditor put the mills at fourteen eighty-one, which changed the, um, I thought it was the cash reserve.
Yeah, look up, yeah, cash reserve went to twenty-four, two hundred and forty-four thousand.
But that's under.
You request the two fifty, but up two, but not over fourteen point eight one. So we got two hundred and forty-four thousand.
That's. Yep. Yes.
All I do is present it, I'm not saying that it's over for discussion, though.
I'm not, not, not disagreeing with your, with your proposal.
I'm not agreeing or disagreeing or anything at this point, I'm just putting it out there, so we have some to work with.
Mentioning to the rest of the commission that that would increase our final appropriation by a dollar amount, which would definitely not be over five hundred and eighty-four thousand. But we would have to lower our, um, cash reserve then by, let's say an equal amount of what these proposed raises would be, so that would go down from two forty-four, which they shouldn't be more than two hundred and forty-four thousand.
So, Rick, my, a bounce back question to you, what if the ones that you proposed to go to twenty-eight, they went to twenty-six now for the first of the year, and then they're getting another dollar fifty after the first of the year, then they're almost at twenty.
Okay, start over, this thing went off again. Say that again.
The four that you're proposing go up to twenty-eight dollars, what if they only went to twenty-six, because then they're getting another dollar fifty after the first of the year?
So they're at twenty-seven fifty.
If you move them between now and the first of the year, they're gonna get six dollars an hour increase.
That's open to discussion, I guess, I'm.
I don't know, I'm just.
This wouldn't be effective today, this would be for January one, correct? That, that's my understanding.
Yeah, so what, I guess, yeah, maybe there's that question, Rick, where, are you.
Well, originally, it was, it would be, when we talked about like with the sheriff's department on Friday, we, we started on, we did it like on October first, and that's where.
Okay, following you out.
This would be comparable to what the sheriff did.
Okay.
The only thing difference in this one is that the, that we're way low on our truck drivers on our class A licenses.
So Rick, was your plan that they would get twenty-eight dollars by the end of this year and then get the dollar fifty on top of it?
Yes.
Okay.
That way they would be at twenty-nine fifty, they're still less than, a, a temporary in Stark County, which I know is higher, starts at thirty-one fifty over there. You go to McLean, they're a little less, or compare, a little close to that. You, you can't even hire anybody at thirty-one fifty. They're, they can't hire anybody either.
And I, I'm just trying to.
My question is.
Math it into our budget here, even if it became effective today, that's gonna raise the expenses in the road department. So the final appropriation will go up by that amount, which would be, and now I'm just gonna repeat myself, which would be definitely under the five hundred and eighty-four thousand, but we would have to reduce our, we, we'd have to reduce something else, so it'd be the cash reserve would be the easiest to reduce by that amount, because we can't get over the fourteen point eight one.
Right.
Okay. Echoing myself already.
But sometimes that's good, so we're all under the same understanding.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay.
Do you know what that dollar amount would equate to with those?
No, I don't know, I would, would, I, what the total would be with the.
Yeah.
That I don't, I don't, I had her work, I'm not sure if I got it.
I think I can help you out with that if you want some.
Sure.
If you have four men in, you're gonna, I'm just wrong. If you have four men, you're raising them four dollars an hour. So if you four times four, times two thousand eighty hours, it comes out to thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty.
For, for example?
For those four. But benefits are fifty percent of that. And that's, it comes up to forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty. That's just a rough shoot from here. Fifty grand.
Correct, not figuring in their overtime.
Yeah, and they'll figure in the overtime and all that also, that's a hundred, they have that on hundred hours.
Some are at fifty, or some are at eighty hours and some are at a hundred.
So run that out to ninety hours. Jamie, are you saying of the four, or are you talking to anybody?
Um, mainly the truck drivers are at nine or eighty, and the blade operators are at a hundred.
So you have a hundred dollars times six dollars, and then what is more?
There's seven at a hundred and four at eighty.
Any thoughts, suggestions?
Thousand and forty.
Still doing math?
Yep.
I just tested already, try to send me the numbers.
Yeah, if we had the number.
It'd be easier.
It would make it a lot simpler, because this is gonna be a rough guess here anyhow, so you're in.
What did you come up with for that first number?
Thirty-three.
Well, it's.
Four men, that is four dollars an hour increase, times two thousand eighty hours, turns out to thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty.
Thirty-three.
So if you got thirty-three thousand for four, and that's not even overtime,
Yeah.
I would assume you're gonna surpass your two hundred and forty-four thousand in cash reserve pretty quickly, not?
But if you look at, like, I think what they're talking about too is the county road is down there, the preliminary was six millions, about six million seven hundred and ninety-nine. See, they already, they got it down to six point two.
Right, but they can't go over this, so the only play that they have is right there.
Yep.
And if.
Right, one, those numbers.
The only one you have to play, if I understand, would be the cash reserve and.
Right. We can, we can go up to six point eight, six, six point eight million on our final appropriation.
Right.
But then our mills go up.
Yep.
So then you gotta subtract, so then you do reverse math to get, you, something else has to cut to get down to fourteen eighty-one again. The easiest one is your cash reserve. But it'd be nice to have a little bit in the cash reserve.
And you, and you can cut.
Because
You can cut with the place.
Of the overtime. We get a snowstorm, snow event, two hundred and forty-four isn't even good. Spend that already.
Come on.
One day a snowstorm and that's about gone.
Okay, we've got.
I'll give you any guarantees on snow.
Three.
No.
No.
We will have some.
My point is.
To the caterpillars.
I was.
I just, you know what?
As they walked across the farmer's alley on that freeway.
I don't look at their stripes.
I'll show you, I have it.
Is there a forecast for millipedes, because they are like out of control this year.
Yeah, see the caterpillar stripes, the woolly bear caterpillars. There's a thing, I'm not making this up.
Well, I mean, I mean, I can make it up, but.
Twenty-six.
I got my kids looking at the caterpillars, so.
Could Gwen add this up pretty quick?
She's gonna be in training all day and it's our P row. We've got training and she needs to be on that, that is all training and I'll, I can get on it too, but she is our. We've got it from one to two.
I'd be training and make the dress excited up and get you out of there.
So I had.
One, one lane.
Excel spreadsheet I could.
Here's the thing, Rachel can do these numbers. Highs. Rachel knows her. And it happened more than once, so I was like, okay. Usually Rachel gets it all ready, but. And I was that older.
They can be, yeah.
With Gwen, on a break, to make sure we got it covered.
Nothing against creepy roses, I'm just.
In their own area.
My house.
I, I have a really hard time with the class A drivers going up that much, the most I would be in line with would be a two dollar an hour bump up, because then by the time January first hit up, hit, then they'd be at the twenty-eight bucks. My own personal opinion.
So they'd go from what?
Like twenty.
So right now, most of them are, or a couple of them are twenty-four fifty, one's twenty-five fifty, and one's twenty-five ninety-eight. The most I'm comfortable with is a two dollar bump up.
Going to twenty-six fifty.
Correct. Twenty-six fifty. Across the board, twenty-six fifty, so then that way, January first, when the cola comes through, they'll be at twenty-eight. That's my thought. The other ones I'm completely fine with. That Rick said.
Okay, okay.
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 So if we're okay with what you just so, Rick suggested, we still would need a, how would that affect?
Yes. Yeah, and I don't know how Travis and Rick and you feel about it, that's just me personally and talking.
King comes out to, just to without doing what you said, I just, I, I, because I didn't go change all the numbers.
I got it, yeah.
But anyways, is that forty-one thousand six hundred would have been, but I mean, we would drop the some, but is it forty-one thousand six hundred plus benefits? And they're, they're not fifty percent by looking what we did, but they're at least, they're close to thirty percent anyways, but, um.
I feel like that's kinda low, Rick.
What's that?
It was thirty-three. I feel like it's kinda low if some of them are getting almost a four dollar an hour.
They're not four dollars, because when you really looked at it, three of them are three fifty and one of them, one of them was a little over two dollars. It's not four, 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 four.
Right. And maybe.
That, that's what the actual numbers came up and then you, um, and I'm not saying, this is just discussion, is all this is, so. Whatever we come up with is, I'm just trying to get an overall number, what it's gonna look like, if you're still gonna have to do it again, even if we do cut it two bucks or whatever, but it, um, I'm just gonna give you a rough guess again here, but, uh, times, uh,
Did Rachel have these numbers?
She put this together, yeah, they did this on Friday, she's got them all. Forty-six hundred times.
We're gonna take, uh, charge raises.
You gonna make a phone call?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Eight, two, thirteen, five.
We just call Rachel.
It's about fifty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-eight.
Say that number, Tom?
With benefits, it's roughly fifty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-eight. And I originally, and it, and it might be even closer, but I'm gonna say we had like fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and something. But I don't remember that, I'm not sure if that were that. If we're comparing apples to apples on that, huh?
That included benefits. That's just amazing.
No, that included benefits.
Oh, the fifty-five, the forty-one.
Yeah, that's close to what that original, because I think some of that got cut a little bit, the original one was the second proposal originally was like fifty-seven thousand eight hundred for twenty, twenty-five.
But you're saying Rachel has all this.
She put it all together.
Yeah, she could just send you.
I, well, she already, they're working on it. Alice calls that one and had her work on it, I can go call her too. You can talk to her.
Anyway, so just.
Oh, I got two minutes too.
Operator one, twenty-eight oh nine, operator two, thirty-three twenty-five. Yeah, that's what I wrote down. That number, right?
Yeah, that's.
That's what you have, twenty oh nine, thirty-three twenty-five.
Yep.
Okay, she's gonna, okay.
But did you do, when you did this first hand?
This is twenty-six fifty.
One, for that, one, two, three, four, five.
Okay, Rachel, well, your question?
With full responsibility. I'm the one who's. Nobody else. Not thirty-three ninety.
You can hear her?
Yes.
Is she on speaker? Got my jar here, they're hearing you, they're hearing you. Excuse me, how the hell do you hear her? I can barely hear her. Uh, yes to your question, I guess.
How do you function in a day where it's?
It's, it's tough, if you wanna be me for today, it's tough.
No, I just thirty-three ninety, even I have work. Yeah.
Yeah.
And when you were telling me, it was going to update for this, this one. But I always start with the rhythm, so I've got those numbers, I just said.
You heard all that?
Oh, yeah.
They're still loving. That is hilarious. I can hear my hearing aids, that's unreal. Okay, yes. Go ahead. Yes. Get both numbers.
Please.
Or we leave it down, let's let it be.
Yeah.
Those are the state.
I think it's a rough, rough, when we were talking about the sheriff's department, if we had seventy-four thousand, we had roughly eighteen thousand, it's not even thirty-three percent, it's closer to twenty-eight percent. It's for the benefits as well.
Okay, the benefits, yeah, that's right.
It's close, a lot, lot closer, I'm not saying that's exactly, but a lot, lot closer.
Yeah, something like that.
I think the only thing that we need to be concerned about is probably the overtime bill that might.
They got that hundred hour.
But sheriff's sons have got overtime too.
Huh?
The sheriff's sons have got overtime too, so.
Yeah, so it'd be, it'd be comparable when you're looking at it.
Guess we're gonna get a, some kind of
Get a spreadsheet on it, yeah.
So we're just gonna wait for that.
Yeah, she can put, then you'll have actual numbers.
Well, I'd rather have, wait now, ten minutes than
Come back and.
Have another meeting in a day or two if
Just because.
We're down to almost.
Yeah, we got, we got another hour here yet, so she's gotta get going in there. You got an hour.
I'm gonna keep you here till last. Figured so much. Pretty much planned for that.
Because this, this probably wouldn't affect the, this, this number is probably not gonna affect the, the overtime.
No. We're waiting for the numbers.
That I have here.
In our, in a, in someone's pay you, 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 you calculate their pay and what they're getting. If you're gonna have like guaranteed overtime, then you can calculate in their pay, but if you have anticipated overtime, that should be a separate calculation.
We always do.
Because I wouldn't actually give you what I'm making.
Well, that's what Terry said, like on Friday, like yeah, the overtime's figured in, but that's only if they get it.
Yeah.
I need it.
So that, that should be calculated in your pay.
You have your base pay, you have a hundred. We calculate it, but it's, it's an anticip, it's not, it's not guaranteed, anticipated, it's not guaranteed.
Even if you had it as a second line. Estimate overtime or something, but not in your regular pay, because that.
That affects your benefits, usually though.
Well, it, it only affects your benefits if you work it, but what I'm trying to say is to get ac, to get accurate how, how up your, what you're making.
Yeah, for your base pay.
Right.
No, you cannot, for, you cannot have overtime for pirs.
Yeah, so like, some of your benefits are based on your base.
But that's just what we do with these numbers though, for figuring it in after this, and then it's going into.
Which is giving me a little.
Coax is extra, yeah.
It don't affect your, it doesn't affect your, um, your health and, but it does affect your social security and your FICA and your pirs a lot.
Not your pirs though.
Not pirs though?
No, pirs is based on base.
You cannot have overtime in pirs.
So what are we bringing?
Pardon?
We need all.
We're waiting for.
We're gonna wait to get the actual.
Okay, gotcha.
We're getting some actual figures, so we'd have, rather than
Yes.
best guesses, which are probably might be way off.
No matter what.
So now if we, okay, so it comes in sixty grand, what are we gonna do? Six, where does that fit, how would we make that?
My quick, some recommendations, the Florida cash reserve, reduce the cash reserve by sixty.
I agree.
So the mill already stays the same.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh. Yes.
But yes, we're still doing.
So what do we do with this, I mean, if we do it right now, we can take it out of that one thirty, but what, what do we do, is the word, is it going to carry over? If we don't use it, these ones?
Hundred thirty?
Yeah.
The one thirty is actually in the, in the
General fund.
In the general fund, so it's.
Because it's not, it's not like.
It's in them.
Can you use it for those transfers wherever we wanna move the, the, for the lap though at that point?
For general discussion, it just got kinda lost for, for next year, it's just part of the cash carryover for next year, it's not in your mark number.
It was a shoot from the hip because we had such a mess last year.
We should have, if we wanted to do that, we needed to do it prior to our, our original budget.
Right.
Our preliminary.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just wondering, it's always gonna look like, you know, because road fund is different, like the general fund is used more. The money that we're thinking about using up for all this stuff, you know, one's over here and the other one's over there.
Different, yeah.
Right, and the other thing that's picked up, and then you have these non-milling lives and those that, period, in the hospital, those can't be used.
Right.
To the mill.
True.
That can't be lost, they're.
Right. Yeah, because it can't be, uh, carted out or if I were to.
That's why we need those mills to kind of be consistent.
That's what, you know, I, I don't know about one. But also, if there was any changes individuals had for their records because of my stuff.
And that's what I thought they were doing, just within that budget, I don't think that one thirty we had, no, that never crossed my mind. I thought they were just doing it for my, my budget.
Right, wow. And they, they, they waited, so you, okay.
Well, during its season, the road fund is distributed for one extra stretch.
See, that's doing, doing. But same as doing the general fund, it stays, it just lowers, it stays or it lowers the average.
Correct.
I just don't know what's, what makes sense to me, but it stays.
I thought it was coming out of.
We need those mills that we have.
These ones right here. Right, these ones right here, not really, because they're supposed to be taken care of.
So if you don't, the budget is still consumed into the next year's budget.
Same principle, but different, different. Different number. I'm getting one, I'm ordering.
But now we're hearing that because of money is taken, here's. I did not know. Yes, that one right there.
The rest is coming out of the.
The rest have not, but that one, that one did.
I, I bet you, Anthony didn't even come in last night, he said, when did he come, like, huh?
Well, we don't have a header.
No? You look, which side you want?
Should be coming today.
Oh, you have one?
Yeah. The one that was supposed to come with it had some troubles that Gus Knight didn't like, so they got us to go on.
Okay, but I know, uh, Dean Johnson's got a thirty-five foot draper header that he's trying to sell.
He is?
He wants like ten.
Tell me more.
I used it and it worked well.
And it's a draper?
It's a draper.
Oh, tell me more, okay.
It's, you know, finger reeled with the draper on it, and I used it on, I put it on my thirty-six ten when I, he wanted me to try it out, so when I did it, it was weak.
Yeah.
I pulled, it worked well, I mean, other than, the only thing I do know it needs is, um, that your, your combine is gonna be different than mine, and that one's got like, they have like a.
Does it have air on that draper? You took yours off off your draper?
He didn't really need it, it was a finger reel, I pulled it in, that's.
I'm trying to think, which one did he take it off of?
See, I could throw a con straw for him, and I would run it on the ground.
Not on the draper, you still have air on your draper?
Air works better for the beams.
Yeah.
Is that a draper flex?
No, this is not flex.
Well, that's what we've been.
I know the difference between a farm all and an all over.
We're on the second engine for the ninety-six hundred in the last three weeks because of faulty water pumps from a local place. So, um, we bought a new combine on Saturday.
You run from a ninety-six hundred to a ninety-seven seventy, that's gotta change.
I run the one, I run the even one, I don't know if you have a ninety. Ninety-six or, I mean, you either got a ninety-six or a ninety-seven, but you'll get used to it, I ran.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna like it, it'll increase your speed by quite a bit.
Oh, your mile an hour?
Yeah.
But that's what, and then the other thing was, is that, the only thing that you're gonna have issues with when you start, all the controls from backwards, you gotta get used to it.
That's right.
Up, up, no, no down.
Because, uh, latest call from.
Thank you.
So this is, um, the new week that Rachel said you guys want for the drivers too.
I guess it's the twenty-six dollar, not the twenty-eight.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, because Rachel went around the whole, maybe each other.
Yep.
So this is, too bad it wasn't forty-four.
So you're saying all these bump ups come to a total of forty-seven?
Correct, for twenty twenty-five, yes.
Forty-seven, three eighty-eight, forty-three.
That's including FICA and retirement, county share and retirement.
And then that's got the budgeted overtime in it too, right?
That does not include overtime, that Rachel was gonna work on that.
Okay.
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 All right, that's what Travis was just asking, and I'm looking at it, I'm like, Alice?
I'm gonna.
She's gonna work on that too, so, but that would be, you know, you couldn't have figured what's.
If we do, and if we do a retro, it's over in the corner, I mean, uh, for the county for twenty twenty-four is ninety-four thirty-four oh four.
Correct.
For the rest of twenty twenty-four.
Which I can't imagine there's not room in their current budget.
Because they were down people quite a bit.
Because they were down people or changes in people.
So, if someone makes this motion, I think this is gonna be one of the lengthiest motions, because one of my recommendations is that if, I'm not making the motion, I'm just.
No, she's wanting to go back to session, we're still on recess, or we better.
Oh, sorry, we're gonna reconvene, yes. I love my commissioners, I thank you for keeping me in line and getting me in order. If this adjustment gets recommended or made in a motion, I think the motion has to include a lot of language where this number, uh, needs to be verified by our payroll department. And then that, after it's verified, and if it is off by cents and a few dollars, that they make the adjustment. And that that be, at that point, the, um, cash reserve be reduced by that amount, so that our mills stay at fourteen eighty-one. Because for next year, that's gonna, so, all of that, my recommendation, if I'm not completely outlying, is to have that all in that motion. Well, our, I want, I want the payroll.
I'm trying to write it down, but it's still complicated.
I want the payroll department to verify this number, because in the end, our deputy auditor who does payroll, we, we, we can't, in my opinion, we can't approve nine, an increase of, uh, forty-seven three eighty-eight point four three, and then it's forty-seven three eighty-eight point four four, because then we'd have to have another meeting to make that adjustment.
Then we gotta come back and we need to give authorizations and fix it without having to.
Yes, without having another, yeah.
Because in these.
And at the same time.
Payroll verification on.
If that number's even off by, and it won't be, but let's say more than two hundred and forty-four thousand, it can't be, you know what I mean, because we can't adjust the two forty-four, more than two forty-four. So.
Or maybe just give a high number that you guys would be okay with if we find something different, and if it's higher than that.
Not to exceed fifty thousand?
I think we can trust that if the number is ninety-five and.
Yes, I think that's, well, but we're still working on overtime, so fifty thousand might not even be enough.
Well, I'm thinking if it's, you know, ninety-five, you'd bring it to our attention, but, you know, within a few thousand, forty-seven.
Okay, you guys give me a number, I mean, because you guys are the ones that gotta approve, like, Rick, what, did you say sixty thousand?
Well, I didn't, I'm just.
I can't believe it would be more than that.
Well, I'm just saying, we get a number that we're comfortable with, it's like not to exceed something, you know, other, you would be able to fix it up to that point without having to come back for a special meeting.
Right.
How about, make the adj, make all the adjustments, send it out to the commissioners. If, between you, I, and three commissioners, we can call a special meeting if the number's like way out of whack.
But can we still in the motion put a.
Sure.
And, and definitely when we get the final numbers, I'll still send it out to everybody, so you're aware.
So if we have a motion on these numbers, that, we have to change overtime numbers yet, or just put the.
We're waiting for the overtime to come.
Yeah, we should work on that, like, oh, okay. Yeah, if you could get that done.
Thanks, Alice.
That'll give us a lot better, closer number.
Yep.
We still got forty-five, she's still got forty-five minutes.
Do you want to do another recess again? Do you want to do another recess again?
We can, we can recess, we'll recess again.
Because I'd hate to have a video with forty minutes of us just looking at each other.
Now, technically, the retirement actually should not change, right, because you can't go.